Good evening. Welcome to the first city council meeting of 2018. It's January 8th. We appreciate you being here. I will call the meeting to order and ask everybody to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent docket, councilors. Does anyone wish to have anything clarified or remove an item? Or is there a motion to approve?
I would like to remove item E just to make a comment.
Item E, okay.
And I'd like to remove item B for further discussion.
B as in boy?
B as in boy.
Okay, Mr. Dorman. So we accept the consent docket minus items B and E?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to accept the consent docket minus items B and E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent docket minus items B and E. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved minus items B and E. That brings us to public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. I would like to remind the audience of the rules. Speakers are limited to speaking about a specific topic. You must be signed up and you have three minutes. When you come to the podium, please address us with your name and your address. And we have Ms. Shirley Weeks. There she is. Good evening.
My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. It is my hope that you remember my dynamic presentation last year about the 12th Street overlay.
Yeah.
Sure.
You weren't here. I was counting on you.
I told her.
I watched on TV.
Okay, I'll just give you a brief summary. Last year, on January the 8th, I thanked the council for initiating and bringing forward the importance of the 12th Street neighborhood and the overlay. And you said it was a safe, viable, affordable neighborhood. I thanked everybody, but then I asked the question about the process. Who, why, had slowed down the overlay? I still would like for us to look at the process. I ask you to focus on a procedure that will move the overlay forward. Please consider a moratorium in the development area until the 12th Street overlay is adopted. I ask you to pass the overlay on the second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. That brings us to items removed from the consent docket. We removed items B and E, so let's...
I'll go first because I have a really short comment. In honor of Elaine, always does this. The Charar Museum Quarterly Report. I just wanted to thank the Charar Museum for the hard work they've done. I hope you read the article in the news press this week outlining a number of things, particularly the new name is an important thing, and forming the downtown cultural district, joining the other entities and having the downtown cultural district. There are great activities scheduled through January listed in the report. So check the Charar website for activities. Gladine, you're shaking your head. Is that where the...
Thank you.
Okay, that's where you can find them. Thank you for the report.
I may just send out a great newsletter also. Check your mail. Good job. Okay.
Thank you.
And item B?
Item B, we found ourselves in an unfortunate situation in review of a renewal contract with a company named Ares from whom we leased the temporary terminal at the airport. When that contract was reviewed by legal, we found that three problems with it. And one is there was an indemnification clause that legal staff has beat into our heads that we can't have in a contract. Two, the jurisdiction was on the East Coast somewhere, and perhaps even Vermont, I think. And finally, there was a clause where if we did not renew, it would have to be returned to the point of origin in the original condition. Well, that building, to get TSA ready and all of the devices and everything in it, we've invested a lot of money in that building. And in negotiating with the company, which our CFO, Ms. Reams, did, determined that if we wanted to radically change the contract, that they would also radically change the lease price.
Did you say the lease price?
Yes, the annual lease. In looking at the future of the airport, there is an FAA discretionary advance that's been a grant that has been programmed for five years out. If that holds, and if at that point, we went into construction mode on a new terminal building to replace this temporary building, it would be at least two years in completion, if not more. So if you look at the current lease price of that building, and the fact that we certainly hope that it's still in use seven years from now, it is much more economical to just buy it out. And that is the whole reason for item B in the report.
Thank you. Questions?
No, I think that kind of covers the questions I had. My concern was just around the length of time we were going to be using the building and making sure we were getting enough useful life out of the building to justify the costs. And so, yeah, certainly given what we expect the life, the use of the building to be, that makes sense to me to go ahead and buy the lease out rather than continue to pay the monthly cost.
Absolutely, saving taxpayer dollars.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item B.
Second.
Do we do these one at a time or together?
However you want to do it. You could do them together, but he's already made a motion.
Yes, okay. There's a motion to accept item B. With a vote of four to zero, item B has been accepted for the consent docket. Is there a motion for item E?
A motion to accept item E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept item E on the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, item E is also accepted on the consent docket. That moves us to public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding a request for closing of all easements between Sixth and Fourth Avenues and Willis and McFarland Streets and the entirety of the right-of-way of McFarland Street between Fourth and Sixth Avenues and the entirety of the right-of-way of Fifth Avenue between Willis and McFarland Streets, CC-18-02. This was postponed from December 18th. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Lance Gross, our development review person, is going to provide that report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Lance Gross with the Development Services Department. The closing before you tonight is for the Westwood Elementary School. The site is adjacent to the current Westwood Elementary School and is indicated with the purple boundary. Stillwater Public Schools has...
Lance, we're not on the screen.
Oh.
There it is.
There we go.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry. Yeah, it's definitely helpful. The site is adjacent to the Westwood Elementary School, as you can see on the map. Stillwater Public Schools has purchased two blocks, and they plan to rebuild the school at this site. The request is to close most easements and all street rightaways within the purple boundary. Easements will be acquired for all new sewer and water lines. Closing of Fifth Avenue and McFarland Street is shown in the hatched area, which will basically be used to create the new school. A traffic study for the school project has been submitted and is currently under review. This is a street view looking to the north on McFarland. McFarland Street is a north one-way street currently. This is a street view of Fifth Street looking to the west from McFarland. Be happy to answer any questions?
Counselors?
No questions.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. We don't have anyone to speak, so I will close the public hearing and ask for staff recommendations.
Approval of the request, closing of the easements and rightaways, subject to the proper removal and/or relocation of the existing utilities and dedication of new easements.
Okay.
Motion.
I would like to ask one question. Will Fifth Street still be open while the school's being built?
Will Fifth Street still be open? Let's see, let's look at the... I don't believe so. That portion of Fifth Street will be closed and vacated through District Court before the actual construction starts. And the proposed location of the school will be basically right there on Fifth Street. We don't have any specific drawings. It's all conceptual right now.
Okay.
It's a good question because I actually drive on that street to drop my kids off at school now. So if we vacate it now, they're not... I mean, I assume Westwood's going to make sure that they don't mess up the drop-off patterns between now and then.
Yes, correct.
They're not going to close these streets down tomorrow.
Yeah, no, no, not at this point. No, it still has to go through additional steps.
Okay.
Are you saying drop-off can be a headache?
I am saying I'm looking forward to the new Westwood and a much, much, much improved traffic pattern for...
It doesn't matter which elementary school. You know, we all know those patterns. Any more questions?
Motion to advance ordinance 3395 to second reading.
Actually, this would just be to approve, and then the first one's... The first reading is... Well, actually, you could go ahead and go down here and do ordinance 3395 if you want because that's the same item. It's kind of up to you, since she's already made the appropriate motion.
Oh, well, it is on first reading. Okay. Go ahead and make that motion. We can do this.
She did.
All right, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 3395 on first reading. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, ordinance number 3395 is approved on first reading. On second reading, Mr. Dorman.
Do you want to go ahead and finish your public hearings? You still have an item to postpone.
Yes, I do.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, let's go back to item B, which is the memo to postpone. It's receive public comment regarding a request for preliminary planned unit development for 1220 West 12th Avenue and change the zoning from RSS residential, single-family, small lot to O office and CS commercial shopping. And there was a memo to postpone until February 5th? And we need a motion on that to postpone it until February 5th?
Yes, ma'am, because you've already noticed it.
Okay.
Motion to postpone to February 5th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item B until February 5th, 2018. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, item B is postponed until February 5th, 2018. All right, Mr. Dorman on second reading.
Ordinance number 3393, an ordinance related to land development in the city of Stillwater, amending Stillwater City Code, Chapter 23, titled Land Development Code, Article 13, Overlay Districts, enacting a new Division IV titled 12th Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, reserving a new Section 23-276.2 for future city council action to establish the boundaries for this overlay district, enacting a new Section 23-276.3 titled Purpose and Intent, a new Section 23-276.4 titled Administration, a new Section 23-276.5 titled Permitted Uses, a new Section 23-276.6 titled Design Standards, new Section 23-276.61 titled Building Front Facade, a new Section 23-276.2 titled Building Materials, a new Section 276.3 titled Building Design, a new Section 23-276.7 titled Accessory Buildings, a new Section 23-276.8 titled Driveways, a new Section 23-276.9 titled Lighting, a new Section 276.10 titled Landscaping, a new Section 23-276.11 titled Parking, a new Section 23-276.12 titled Bulk Standards and Providing for Severability.
Discussion, councilors.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3394. Please vote.
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3393. And with a vote of four to zero, ordinance number 3393 is approved. Is approved?
Approved, yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes. All right, that takes us to...
339.
Ah, 3393. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3394, an ordinance related to land development in the city of Stillwater, amending Stillwater City Code, Chapter 23, titled Land Development Code, Article 13, titled Overlay Districts, enacting a new Division 5 titled 12th Avenue Mixed Use Overlay District, reserving a new Section 23-272.2 for future city council action to establish the boundaries for this overlay district, enacting a new Section 23-277.3 titled Purpose and Intent, a new Section 23-277.4 titled Administration, a new Section 23-277.5 titled Permitted Uses, a new Section 23-277.6 titled Permitted Uses Restrictions, a new Section 23-277.7 titled Design Standards, a new Section 23-277.71 titled Building Front Facade, a new Section 23-277.72 titled Building Design, a new Section 23-277.8 titled Accessory Buildings, a new Section 23-277.9 titled Driveways, a new Section 23-277.10 titled Lighting, a new Section 23-277.11 titled Landscaping, a new Section 23-277.12 titled Parking, a new Section 23-277.13 titled Signage, a new Section 23-277.14 titled Bulk Standards and Providing for Severability.
Counselors, discussion.
Well, I think before... I'd like to make one comment before we proceed with action on this. So just to make sure that everybody's clear, because it's been, you know, we've had the holidays since we've spoken about this and New Year. So these ordinances in no way assign a specific property to these overlays. These are merely definitions of what each overlay is.
These are the regulating provisions. The process for assigning actual properties to this comes later. We're sending out notices this week for the remaining area that hasn't been noticed. And so the intent is that the planning commission and this board would take that up sometime in February. And then, once that final determination is made, then the final ordinances can be put into place, and this thing should be operational sometime in March.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3394. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, ordinance number 3394 is approved. That brings us to reports from officers and boards. Miscellaneous items from this city attorney, Mr. Dorman.
Couple of items tonight, ma'am. Request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307B3 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property. Secondly, request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307C10 for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Mr. McNichol.
If I get the mic turned on, I actually have two items. And one would be get your dancing shoes ready for the 13th Annual Dancing with Daddy. This year, dances will take place both on February 9th and 10th at the Stillwater Community Center. This event is open to all ages, and tickets are available now through February 7th, online, and at the community center.
Are you going to that?
All right.
I am, are you?
Very, very excited.
Maybe a dance-off in our future.
I feel excluded. I was not blessed with daughters. And finally, the operations department is scheduled to place a sidewalk from Yoot Street north to the south entrance of the Lynx Apartments on the east side of North Washington. This project stemmed from resident requests and heavy foot traffic in the area. After construction, pedestrians will be able to get to Cameo County using fewer high-speed travel roads. Weather permitting, the project should be complete by the end of the month.
That's great news. Thank you. Anybody else have news?
I do have a notice reminder. Stillwater Police Department wants to remind businesses and commercial property owners, not residential, anybody with an alarm, to renew their permits now through Wednesday, February 28th. Six-dollar annual fee for each alarm registered, a late fee of $25 for alarms registered after March 1st. And you can download that application at stillwater.org or pick one up at the police
Counselor Joyce?
Yeah, similar to the e-notifications program, the city has a service in place known as Be Informed Stillwater that relays emergency notifications and certain non-emergency events. Alerts can be sent to home phones and cell phones by voice or text message or by email. You can sign up for alerts online at stillwater.org under the Emergency Alerts page. And remember to include your address when signing up so notifications are specific to your area of town.
Thank you. Counselor?
And to close us out, project update. So improvements to the flow equalization basin and the sludge holding beds are underway at the wastewater treatment plant. The basin provides temporary storage for excess wastewater entering the plant, and the sludge beds hold the sludge prior to being injected in the field. The project consists of cleaning the basin, installing new concrete liners, adding new valves, and sealing joints in cracks in the concrete walls. The project should be completed this fall.
Thank you. Anything else, councilors? At this time, I am going to recess the Stillwater City Council meeting and go to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting before we go into executive session. But this time, I will call the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting to order. Trustees on the consent docket, would anyone like more clarification, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, the consent docket for Stillwater Utilities Authority is approved. Brings us to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
Lauren Smith will kick off the report on distributed generation rate.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, 2018. We have a lot of great things coming up for 2018 in the electric department, and this is just one of them. So on June 5th, the trustees approved the updated net metering interconnection agreement. As discussed during that presentation, while net metering is a simple approach to dealing with DG customers, it is not the most equitable approach. To date, there are so few DG customers that net metering has not adversely impacted those customers who do not own generation. Market trends indicate there will be an increase in DG customers in the future. When this happens, the current electric rate structure will not allow the SUA to recover the full cost of serving DG customers. If the SUA does not recover the full cost of serving any customer class, the other customer classes subsidize or pick up the slack, which is not equitable. In order to prevent subsidization across customer classes and to allow for future growth in distributed generation, staff has been working with the consulting firm Avant Energy to develop a DG rate designed, which will be presented tonight. And they're below. And I'll see if I can... There it is. Pop that up. This may be a tag-team affair throughout. There's a lot of information to get to.
Good evening. My name's David Niles, and I'm with Avant Energy. And I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. So again, as Mr. Smith said, we're going to talk about distributed generation rate design. So I'll go through a quick introduction, talk about an overview of distributed generation, I'll outline the rate alternatives that we considered, and then I'll put forth the recommendations from our study. So there's my picture. My name's David Niles. I'm a vice president with Avant Energy. I've been with Avant for over 15 years. I work with municipal utilities in the areas of strategic planning, utility management, and rate design. And with me, I have Greg Vadeen, senior associate, who has done a lot of the analytical work on this project. So I thought we'd start out by talking about, you know, just real quickly, what is distributed generation? So distributed generation is customer-owned generation. You know, typically, the things you think of are rooftop solar, maybe a wind turbine on a larger property, but that's owned by a customer and used to supply a portion of that customer's own electric load. And the goal for the distributed generation rate design project, as Mr. Smith said, was to develop and design a new distributed generation rate for Stillwater Utilities Authority. And the current approach is a net metering approach, where onsite customer generation is netted against consumption, and then the customer pays the standard tariff rate for net consumption. So if they're a residential customer, they pay the residential rate on that net consumption. So if you had a customer that used 1,000 kilowatt-hours in a month and generated 400 kilowatt-hours, they would pay that standard rate on the 600 kilowatt-hour net amount. And as Mr. Smith alluded to, net metering typically results in subsidization of customers, particularly at the residential level. And the reason for that is that residential electric charges are designed with two components. You have your base customer charge, which is a fixed charge every month regardless of usage, and then you have a usage charge, which is based on the amount of kilowatt-hour consumption that a customer uses in a given period. And on average, in Stillwater, the average electric, residential electric bill is right at $100 a month, but the customer charge is only $9.61 currently. So less than 10% of the charge is fixed. But when you look at them, a large part of our study was to examine the costs of the utility authority in the electric department, and they're roughly half-fixed and half-variable. And so the way that utilities across the country for, you know, a century have dealt with this at the residential level is to add in the costs associated with the fixed costs of running a utility are sort of embedded or added on to the true variable cost of actually acquiring the electricity. And so you have a residential rate that's higher than the sort of true variable cost because it doesn't make sense to meter peak demand, which is how commercial and industrial customers are typically measured, or large commercial industrial customers. So you recover, you know, a small amount through the customer charge, and everything else gets collected through the energy charge, even though that's not how all the costs are created or born about...
Why do we do that? Why don't we just charge the base fixed cost to everybody every month?
I think the idea... I think there's some policy there because the true fixed cost is going to be close to $50 a month, and for lower-income people or lower-usage people, that would be typically more of an economic burden. And I think typically, utilities from a policy standpoint have said that they're going to subsidize that cost a little bit.
Thanks.
Of course. And the current... I'm sorry, was there another question? Oh, there. The current net metering tariff is limited to 100 kilowatt installation. So the alternatives we considered, first, we considered looking at continuing the net metering approach, the current structure. We looked at what is called avoided cost for all customers. We looked at an increased customer charge for residential customers and avoided costs for business customers. And then we also looked at a demand... And then we also looked at a demand charge for residential customers and avoided costs for business customers. And I want to talk about the objectives real quickly, and Mr. Smith again alluded to the first objective, which was to reduce or eliminate this cross-subsidization. So if you have a customer that elected to install distributed generation, they're getting paid at that net residential rate, which in Stillwater is roughly 10.5 cents a kilowatt-hour. But again, that charge is not covering only the variable costs of Stillwater Utilities procuring that electricity. It covers some of the fixed costs as well. So in essence, there's an inequality, because they're getting credited or paid for that rate, the owners of the distributed generation systems, at that 10.5 cents rate when the true variable cost is closer to 4 or 5 cents a kilowatt-hour. It means that all the customers that don't have distributed generation systems are subsidizing those people. So the primary objective was to look for a system that reduces that cross-subsidization. Another objective was to have a tariff that can be applied to all rate classes, not just necessarily residential customers. And then the third option, or third objective, was to have a tariff that supports both pre- and post-what's called AMI, that's Advanced Metering Infrastructure, which the electric department is in the process of implementing. So I will go on and look at the sort of pros and cons of each. So, you know, the benefit of net metering is that it's what you're doing right now, so it promotes stability in rate tariff offerings. But the biggest drawback is, again, we've talked about, is this cross-subsidization by non-distributed generation customers, and it doesn't necessarily cover larger installations. If you had a larger commercial property that wanted to put a 200 or 300 kilowatt installation on, that wouldn't be allowed under the current program. An avoided cost approach, the benefit there is it accurately compensates the utility for both its energy and demand costs. So again, energy is your usage over the whole month, the sort of total electricity you use. Demand represents the most electricity you use at any one point in time. And again, historically, residential customers have not been charged a demand charge because, until recently, the metering costs haven't been there to sort of cost-effectively meter that type of, you need a smarter, more technologically advanced meter. And that's again, part of why residential rates have just been a customer charge and an energy charge. An avoided cost also scales based on the size of the installation, so, you know, it doesn't, this really gets more to what I'm going to talk about on the next couple of items, but if you increase a fixed customer charge, that's going to have a disproportionate effect with whether you're a larger user or a smaller user. And another benefit of the avoided cost approach is that it provides one rate for all customers. The drawbacks or cons is that a customer needs two meters installed, and under this system, the cost would be passed on to the customer. So you'd have a meter that would read what you're pulling in from the utility when you need to use power, and if there's ever times at which, and sorry, and then the other meter would read your generation, straight on your, so again, right now, under a net metering system, there's one meter, and it's netting those two together, and I'll get to that a little bit more in a minute. Avoided cost also requires explanation to customers because it's a little bit more of a complex rate structure, and you need to maintain an avoided cost calculation because the avoided cost approach, what you say is, the utility's going to pay customers what it otherwise would have paid had it been procuring electricity from where it normally gets it, which, for the case of Stillwater, is the GRDA or the Grand River Dam Authority. Another alternative that was looked at was increased residential customer charge. That has, provides some stability across monthly bills, and it allows the utility to recoup the cost of serving DG customers. So, you know, you have your true fixed costs, and the utility's able to recover those from a fixed charge. The drawbacks, it requires a large one-time increase to the customer charge, plus likely future increases. So, looking at the cost of service, the sort of the light cost-of-service study we did, the true monthly cost, fixed cost, to serve a residential customer is closer to $50, and you're only charging 10 right now. So that would be a large increase if you were to apply it. Again, no variation by customer size, so within your residential class, you have larger users and smaller users. And then the increased residential charge wouldn't apply to business customers. Another, a final option we looked at was adding a residential demand charge. The benefit of that is it more accurately reflects the cost to the utility of sort of what's the effect of, you know, someone who's running their dishwasher, air conditioner, all those things. You have to build out infrastructure and capacity, if everyone were using everything at once, versus if it's spread out over time, then the total fixed investment would be lower. And the other thing about a residential demand charge is it could incentivize customers to manage peak usage, which might be beneficial. The drawbacks there are that residential users just aren't accustomed to demand charges. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but when I go home and I turn on the dishwasher, I don't think about, I don't use that delay button that they put on there. It would require more advanced metering infrastructure to be installed, because as I said, right now, the meters on individual residences aren't set to record maximum usage in a given time period. And the last thing is that a demand charge, based on our modeling of your customer's usage, would have more bill volatility for customers. So in the summer months, it would go up quite a bit because you use a lot more usage when you're running your air conditioner, and then, so the bill swings would be wider. So based on those pros and cons, our rate recommendation is to, again, implement avoided cost approach for all customers. So as I said, there'd be two meters and one bill for distributed generation. So the customer would be charged for all energy used at the appropriate retail rate for that class, and the customer would be credited for all energy generated based on that avoided cost rate. And so again, that's the variable cost that the utility pays to the Grand River Dam Authority for energy purchased that's in turn delivered to customers.
Now, you said under that cost model that the customer would be charged for implementing the infrastructure to meter that. In other words, they'd be charged for the meter.
For the extra meter, yeah.
How much is a meter?
I don't have a good answer for that one, I'm sorry. I would say less than 100 bucks.
Okay.
It's not significant.
Okay. Like I said, I had no idea myself, so are we talking about a $10,000 capital expenditure here, or?
So as a component or as a percentage of a total distributed generation and installation, it would be a very small percentage of the cost. And these, the credit again would be applied in the format of a bill credit, which would be applied to the monthly electric bill, and that's similar to the current program. And any excess credit would be rolled forward to future bills. And as I said, the generation credit would be billed on Stillwater Utilities Authority avoided cost. So that's the avoided Grand River Dam Authority energy cost, and that's broken down into on-peak and off-peak. So on-peak, they define as 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and everything else is off-peak. And it would be adjusted for losses, as well as the fuel clause adjustment or power cost adjustment that GRDA sends on to Stillwater. And the idea there is to be most equitable to the install, to the people installing distributed generation systems. So if you think about an electric system, Stillwater purchases energy, and it comes in at a transmission substation, excuse me, and then it's moved through the distribution system into people's homes. By having the generation at the home, you avoid the losses, so Stillwater actually buys more power than it needs to get to its customers because you lose power as it moves through the system. So by having the generation at the sort of site of consumption, you avoid those losses. So you would take the actual rate that Stillwater pays GRDA, and you would increase it for the average system losses. So it's a little bit of a higher payment to those people who have distributed generation installed, recognizing that there's more value to that. And then there's also this concept of an avoided demand cost, because, so Stillwater's costs, a portion of their demand costs are based on what the total system peak usage is. So not necessarily on a customer-by-customer basis, but for the system as a whole. And there are demand charges that GRDA charges Stillwater based on its total system peak. And so the plan here under this rate recommendation is that the DG tariff would credit customers who have distributed generation for whatever their system was putting out at the time of Stillwater's overall system peak, recognizing that their costs would be lower by having that generation. So if you have a peak that happens, you know, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon when the sun's out bright and shining, then a customer would get a credit in that month. But if it's one of those months where the peak is later in the day, say 8 o'clock, and the sun's gone down, then there might not be a demand credit in that month. So finally, there's no fixed kilowatt maximum for customer generation under this concept, but there would be a limit to the amount of usage that would be applicable to the, for the credit, and that would be limited to the customer's maximum monthly electric usage during the prior 12 months. And that's to encourage customers to build a system that's appropriately sized for their home or business. And then another, so even though we said this could accommodate larger systems, there is a component, any customer installed systems over 100 kilowatts would require evaluation and special approval by Stillwater Utilities Authority. And that's really meant to be more of a system impact kind of study, just to make sure that having a large amount of generation added, where typically there's been consumption, doesn't mess with the system or the distribution or any switching or any type of more technical kinds of concerns. So in summary, the avoided cost system removes the cross-subsidization, which was the primary objective in undertaking this study. It's fair in terms of, it appropriately compensates customers for the avoided cost that the utility would have otherwise incurred by substituting customer-owned generation for wholesale supply, and it's relatively simple to implement. The last thing I want to talk about is I think it's important to recognize what is the effect on existing customers of this change. So existing net metering customers would receive less for their generation on a per-kilowatt-hour basis. So right now, you've got six residential customers on this distributed generation tariff. They're getting that 10.5 cents per kilowatt-hour energy credit, and that would move down to about 3.5 cents. But that's really the effect of removing that cross-subsidization. They're getting, you know, more than what is equitable right now. The other thing is sort of the timing and transition of this. So the utility authority has the right to terminate the rate within 30 days based on the language in the current net metering agreement. What we suggested is that the Utilities Authority consider several alternatives. One might be to allow customers to remain on the rate for a set amount of time tied to average system recovery. So, you know, there's a number of studies that suggest that, you know, based on net metering approaches, an average solar installation recovers its costs in, say, seven to eight years. So you might say if you implemented the system in 2013, you could stay on the rate until 2020, 2021. Another option would be to transition all customers after a fixed period of time. So say, five years from now, you can stay on for five years, and then everyone's going to get moved on to the new approach. And a final option would be to grandfather existing customers on the net metering rate as long as they're in the service territory and living in that facility, in that house or business. So with that, you know, the next steps are just to finalize the distributed generation rate tariff. One of the things that we at Avant always say is that we think it's important to communicate changes to customers so they understand what's changing and why it's changing, and then put the new rate tariff into effect. And then just looking longer-term, collecting data from distributed generation customers as this new metering system gets put into place, considering a full cost-of-service study, once that AMI system is implemented, to help make sure that the rates are fair across the board entirely. And then just monitoring future customer DG installation trends. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Smith.
Counselors, trustees?
I just have an observation. It sounds complicated to keep track of, you know, when people peak and all that stuff. And does the avoided cost fluctuate much?
So it would be based on GRDA's rates, which I think have been pretty stable and generally, you know, trended upward as energy costs have trended upward. I think they get reset once a year at most. So I mean, it's not like the rate would be changing every month, so you'd be sort of playing a constant guessing game.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that's true. So the one thing I think is that there, as I mentioned briefly, I mentioned a PCA or a fuel clause adjustment. So that, there's a small component of the rates that does fluctuate on a monthly basis, but that's not a, on a dollar basis, is not a large component of the rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustees, anybody else?
I mean, I don't know if this is really a concern other than my curiosity, but what, tell me more about this, the demand rate? How does a charge based on a demand rate work?
So, again, that's usually for larger commercial and industrial customers. And so, the way it worked in the old days was there was, you know, a meter that would do this, and it would sort of, it would, as usage went up, it would sort of hold in place at the largest amount in time. And so the idea there is that, you know, Stillwater has built transmission facilities, distribution facilities, transformers, all those things that need to accommodate the most usage that the system needed at a given time, which, most of the time, the usage is going to be well below that. And so the idea is that you want to have energy charges that recover the costs of the actual energy, but then the demand charge sort of covers the generation, the transmission, the infrastructure that goes into being able to supply the single largest draw on the system in a given time period.
So, on a monthly basis, how does a demand calculation work? I mean, if my demand...
So, demand is typically priced in what's called dollars per kilowatt-month. And so if you have an industrial customer that uses two megawatts, which would be 2,000 kilowatts, and the demand rate is, you know, around, say, $18 or so for one of your larger users, so then that would be, you know, 2,000 kilowatts times $18 a kilowatt-month would be $36,000 for fixed charges, and then the energy rate would be applied to their actual energy usage.
So if we were to implement a residential demand rate, it would add some fixed number every month based on how high their peak demand was?
How much an individual house uses at once, yes. And so, you know, that's why a lot of times, efficiency programs that utilities offer, you know, business customers are interested in reducing their peak usage because they see a direct monthly bill impact by reducing the maximum amount they use in a given time period.
I mean, you explained that we couldn't, it's difficult to do that without this advanced metering infrastructure being in place. Is that a more, is that a rate structure that we're going to look at going forward? If we have that kind of technology in place with advanced metering, I mean, does that give us a better ability to control or more fair rates to consumers, or is it something we're going to consider in the future?
There are municipalities that are going to residential demand rates, some only for customers owning distributed generation, and some across the board. It's not, I would say it's not common yet because it's been more recent because of the technological advances allowing metering to be cost-effective at that level. But, I mean, you certainly, again, can have customers be more informed and create certain incentives by pricing. It's one direction that some people are talking about going. I'd say it's not mainstream yet by any means.
I have one more question. Maybe this is for Lauren, but, I mean, does anything in this, I mean, this to me is an attempt to come up with a, just a sort of neutral, fair pricing structure for people who are using distributed generation? I mean, there's nothing...
Yes, sir, absolutely.
...that's trying to incentivize or de-incentivize, or, I mean, do we have a position about whether we'd like to encourage or discourage more distributed generation?
Our hope is that it incentivizes, and we'll all come up, I mean, our hope is that it incentivizes, and we believe it's the fairest rate.
Well, I think, Dan Blankenship, SUA Director, I want to make sure we don't get in a semantics issue here, because I think what, when Lauren says incentivize, when I hear incentivize, I hear that you're going to provide some sort of financial incentive for this to occur. And this rate structure does not, it's a, basically what you said, it's equitable across the board, cost, we collect the cost of service from the customers who we're providing the service to. So it does not incentivize or de-incentivize from an economic standpoint DG.
But from your point of view, would it be better to have more distributed-generated customers or less?
It depends on, I guess, it depends on your objective. As long as we are equitably collecting from the customers, it's really kind of a neutral position, yeah. Uh-huh. But if you, if you are, I guess if you're charging more, it just, it depends on what your objectives are. But we've taken a neutral approach.
Okay. And that's kind of the goal, is to get a rate structure in place where it is a wash?
That's...
We're not incentivizing one way or the other.
Right. That's what the objective that we identified as in the study was, yes.
Anybody else?
Will you make the decision on the last point that the gentleman made about the three different choices for the present net metering people?
Yes, we will, well, that'll be part of, and I think Lauren's going to talk about the next steps, and then once we have some direction from you all, that will be part of when we come back with the actual rate design.
So, lastly, I have the recommendation, and I'll read it because it's a little lengthy, so I want to make sure that we get all of it right for the books. But it is recommended that the trustees approve alternative number two, which is part of your report. I'll read alternative two so that we're clear. It directs staff to prepare a DG rate based on the avoided cost for all customers approach. This approach minimizes cross-subsidization between customer classes and has no economic impact on the SUA. The customer pays their standard retail rate for all power consumed, and the SUA credits the customer for all power generated at the SUA's avoided cost. And I want to add one more little paragraph to that for... And I want to add one more little paragraph to that for your consideration. With the exception of alternative one, which is what we're doing now, any DG rate design will have to be provided to GRDA for review to ensure that the rate design does not violate the terms of the purchase power contract prior to being presented to the trustees for consideration or action on the final tariff and the decisions that we make on how to implement. So those details still need to be worked out. We just need to take this next step to get there. That was Law.
Do we have any idea on how GRDA is going to view this? I mean, this is the issue because of our, what, full contract, full requirements?
Right, full requirements contract. There, we know because we've been sitting down and we've been having a number of conversations with them about community solar and some of the smart energy initiatives that we've talked about. And basically, their initial response is they want to be made whole. So if they feel that this, you know, as a, if it is going to reduce how much electricity that they sell to us, then they're probably going to want to look at some means or method to make them whole for any losses that they would occur because of this. That's what I anticipate. But we have a, we have a pretty good, I think, position, given the terms of the contract that we have right now, because we have an unlimited amount right now in our contract if we stay with the net metering. So if they push too hard on us and we say, well, we just, we'll just stay with our net metering, then there is absolutely no limitation on that.
That's what, I guess that's what, that's why it brings the question. I mean, if it's okay what we're doing under net metering, why would they have an objection to doing it this way?
Well, I think then, because they agreed to, as part of the overall negotiations of the contract, we negotiated basically all of the terms of the contract. That was part of the negotiation, and they willingly agreed to just accept the program that we had at the time. And the program we had at the time is our net metering program, and it, the only limitation, it had the 100 kW limitation per system, but it didn't have a number of limitations on the number of customers who could do that. So we fully intend to use that as part of the discussion with GRDA.
I know you are very active in the MISO organization. Are there other municipalities that are moving to this type of, trying to move to this type of program?
There are, in fact, the Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority, OMPA, they have, I think, is it about 60, or no, 40-some, 40-some members, and they actually provide, prepared a guide for their members, and some of their members have adopted that. They have chosen, most of them have chosen, that have done that, have gone with the higher customer charge approach, and so.
Meaning that you increase that $9 that we charge right now to?
Basically to $50.
And just say, if you're going to generate your own electricity, then you're paying your flat rate upfront?
Right. They're covering the fixed costs with the fixed charge.
Is that an easier way to manage it?
I don't think there's, I don't know that there's necessarily an easier way to manage it with the fixed charge. It's just a charge that's there a month. I think that this approach, the avoided cost approach, is a more equitable approach. And that was a bigger objective than maybe ease of administration.
And that seems like it would disincentivize the generator, building something yourself if you're going to.
I think that that's what you will hear. I think that, I think it's a possibility that, you know, any type of rate structure, there are some that will say that will disincentivize, but it's hard to argue with the equitable approach.
Sure.
Anything else? No. Thank you, I appreciate you doing that.
Yes, thank you very much.
So what do you need from us tonight? A motion? Okay.
Right, if you want to, if you want us to proceed with our recommended approach and actually develop the rate structure and bring it back to you for your consideration and approval if it meets so.
Okay, trustees?
So I'll make the motion to proceed with developing a rate structure on an avoided cost for all customers basis.
With the addition that you added?
Not really an addition, just a clarification. It's just a report, so.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for SUA 18-03. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, it's been voted, and that you should continue. All right, that brings us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
General manager?
No items, ma'am.
Trustees?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is adjourned. We will now reconvene this Stillwater City Council meeting. Do we have a motion and a second to move into executive session?
Boops.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we are now moving into executive session.